Okay, remind? Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Wednesday, September 24th Public Site and Building Commission meeting. I'd like to start off with a order and a pledge of allegiance. If you please join me. Okay, is there any public input? I don't see anybody. So the answer is no. So that's the next one. Any correspondence? No, we don't have it. Kathy did not, does not have anything extra. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from the regular meeting of September 10th, 2025. Did everybody on the commission review it? Any questions or anything? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes of the Wednesday, September 10th, 2025, Public Site and Building Commission meeting. All right, all in favor? Okay, passed. Thank you.
Dave, yes, I'm saying.
Yeah, I see Davis. Good.
I abstained.
Okay. Thank you, Dave, for joining us. Thank you. Okay, I don't believe there's any new business. So we'll move on to the old business. Okay. Welcome, everybody. Dr. Carver, Tyler, Jennifer, for the updates on the Bethel High School HVAC upgrade. Now, Rick Davidoff, he was going to join us too. Is Rick on? I don't see him.
Do you want to give him a minute? Can you move?
Yeah, well, we'll try to give him a minute. I heard from him earlier this week that the lift for the, I mean, equipment on the roof will be done this Saturday. So, Dr. Carver, what I understand, oh, everybody's shaking their head. Uh-oh.
No. Well, Tyler can explain what happens, but it's, I think it's been delayed a week. Tyler, go ahead.
It has been delayed. They're not going to be ready for it. And the Save More is stating that they won't be ready due tomorrow's, due to tomorrow's weather. Sorry, Rick says he's waiting in the room to be let in. Is there anybody waiting? I didn't think anybody had to be let in.
I don't see anybody.
Oh.
I don't, I'm not, I don't see anybody waiting.
Maybe he's not on the correct link then.
What was that?
Maybe he's not on the correct link.
Yeah, because I don't see anybody waiting.
Which is so late. Tyler, you asked to try to log off and log back.
Yeah, that's what I just told him. I'm also just going to re-forward the link that Kathy had sent out.
Okay, well, in the meantime, either Tyler or Jennifer or Dr. Carver can maybe, do you have any comments about the progress of going on? Tyler, maybe you probably have daily information. So it's going to rain the next day or two, so they probably cannot do the work to prep for the lift, I would assume.
Yeah, so they're still working on putting the structural steel posts on the roof. And as of this afternoon, they have stated that due to tomorrow's weather, sorry, Rick is asking me to send it to a different email than I originally had, that they are not going to be ready for Saturday. So Saturday has been canceled. It is being rescheduled. They've already, I was advised this afternoon that they have scheduled the crane for next Saturday, although we have not internally, the Board of Ed has not had a chance to review that and see if it is the weekend that will work for us. So our conversation has to happen tomorrow. I need to touch base with Chris Trott, the principal, and make sure that there's nothing that would prevent us from being able to have the pick on next Saturday, October 4th.
And I noticed Mr. Trott, he's been out sick. So, I mean, just looking at the calendar, it doesn't look like there's anything that's going to prohibit it, but he would have to confirm it.
Okay. Well, we'll write that down then. A wish list of October 4th for the lift, seeing that they could prep all the work in the post, you know, ready for lift for next week. I also just wanted, if somebody asks, maybe Nancy Ryan was not here tonight. I think she asked, what is the post warranty for any work to be done within the next year or so? So there was an email from September 11th from Carolyn Oroff stating that it says, SES's commissioning scope does include a post-construction near end of warranty visit 10 months into the 12-month period. The review will capture and identify any issues that develop after construction completion and the final commissioning report would. So there is a warranty and they're going to be doing an inspection after 10, 10 months to make sure everything is correct. So I think Nancy's question was correct. Oh, there's Rick now, okay.
So can I ask you a question? This was supposed to have been done, like, the steel work was supposed to have been completed like a couple of months ago. Am I wrong on that, Tyler?
Nope, you're correct.
So obviously, there's been holdups since that hadn't been the weather, because the weather's been amazing. Are they going to complete? Do we have confidence, you Tyler and Dr. Carver have confidence that they're going to get this completed before the weather goes to crap on us in the next couple of months?
They did submit a new schedule and Rick, I believe you, I don't have it in front of me, but what is their completion date now? It's, I thought it was mid-October.
You're muted.
Putting steel on the roof in the next couple of weeks, that's a pretty aggressive schedule because, I don't know, I've been doing this for 40 years and that's a pretty damn aggressive schedule in my life.
Rick, can you offer anything? I think you're muted.
Sorry. Yeah, so they, they're just, you know, they're cutting in and putting up posts and then laying the steel on top of it. Okay, so it's, we don't have the, the walkways and whatnot going around it. So that's a little bit, a little bit of time there. But yeah, they're, they're supposed to be putting everything up next, you know, a couple of days, but with the weather going, that's how we, the potential weather, you know, coming in and the, the risk of getting water into the building, which is why they postponed the, the pick for this weekend. But should they have had steel up? For sure, they should have had it weeks ago. I mean, it appears that the work, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tyler, because you say it a lot more than I do, that the, the work inside has been going fairly well as far as getting, getting things done, you know, keeping out of the way, not necessarily communicating great with the, with the staff all the time, but on a, on a daily basis, getting that work done. And much of that is complete, much to our chagrin when I went out there three weeks ago, I believe it was, to, you know, make sure that everything was, you know, set, there was nothing done on the roof, which we were very surprised that, you know, walking up with SES and Tyler going through that and why they, why they didn't do that in the last couple of weeks, I have no idea.
Did they have, yeah, I was just about to ask, is there any reasoning? Like, if it's been going so well inside, then what's, you know, obviously it hasn't been the weather, so what's keeping them from doing the outside work?
I think, I think what they, and whether it's mutually exclusive or not, you know, they've been trying to concentrate on getting things done so the school can come back, you know, and then working on the exterior of the building, you know, while school was in session. That's, that's what we're being told.
I'm not buying it.
Manpower, I mean, what is the issue? We kind of came in late, I mean, most of us, but, I mean, I don't understand, I mean, everything's delayed, 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 which I understand there are weather delays and whatever, and they had to break through walls and get some asbestos surveys done, but what's the root cause of the delays? Rick, and I'm not trying to put you on the, on the point here, but I'm just curious.
Understood, and we've, we've, you know, heard about labor, you know, getting labor involved for that. You know, at the beginning of the project, just trying to get the, the abatement approved was a, was a lengthy, a lengthy process. But, you know, after that, you know, they, they carte blanche to the, to the building naturally. So, you know, that's, just trying to get the labor in there has been the, the company line right along.
But they're, but they're not working normal business hours, so they couldn't have, you know, asked others to come and help out, kind of. Again, I've been doing this for a long time.
Yeah.
You know, you ask, hey, you want to do some overtime, you want to do some extra hours, you want to switch shifts? And, you know, a lot of times people be greedy for the overtime or whatever. So I, I'm just not buying it, I'm sorry.
I kind of agree with Dave. I mean, they missed that artist 30th deadline. It should have been absolutely all hands on deck. At that point, I don't, I don't understand how we lose another month after, you know, after everybody else, we were all frustrated a month ago about this. It's, it's, it's odd. And, and the other thing that's, doesn't sit well with me is we keep approving these invoices and they keep billing for steel work that isn't complete. And it keeps coming from, I guess, the, you know, down the line to us and we keep approving it, but it's not getting done.
Yeah, well, that's what I was going to, the other thing, the point I was going to say is, we need to throw this stuff is, we're not approving any, we should, I shouldn't say we're not, we should not approve anything else for the next month or so and let them catch up, because they've already been paid for work that hasn't even started yet.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the structural steel and things that they, they have built for, build for up until this point, some of that was done underneath, you know, underneath the, the roof, you know, prior to going in, up, you know, getting up the risers and things like that. So, and Tyler, you've, you've seen the structural steel that, that's been in there. They currently have an invoice pending that they submitted for a pencil rec. And I've been going back and forth with Craig Coleronen in regard, and they're, and they're billing for the, you know, the pick and the structural steel and whatnot that's supposed to have been done. My comments back to Craig yesterday, I believe it was, was that, you know, I'm holding, I'm holding on to this invoice until we see what, what actually gets done for this month. You know, because they usually send the pencil recs a few days, you know, before the billing, the billing is supposed to go through the end of the month. So, you know, sometimes they, you know, kind of look, look ahead, but I like to hold on to those so I figure out exactly what's been done. So I, you know, that, that's what we're doing and there's, you know, $30,000 on there for the crane. There's a bunch under there for structural steel, which will, you know, would, would definitely be taking off, because naturally it's not getting done this month, so it'll be done next month. And I think that, you know, the, the numbers up there were about 300, 350,000, you know, of that, this probably take up a good 75,000 for what, what hasn't, what, what they're projecting that hasn't been done.
But Rick, I, I concur with Dave and I think Tyler's very polite in his not saying, but the, I, I don't feel like Jason, who's the, what is Jason's role?
He's the, he's the senior, basically senior PM. He's, he's the VP of the, of the.
And I don't want to speak for Tyler, but I, I don't feel like Jason has a good handle on what's actually happening day to day and monitoring his people either. And I think it's, it's something that we've expressed repeatedly to them. I, I, you know, again, I don't want to throw Tyler on the spot here, but I know he even talked to Jason about the pending weather. And are we still going to be able to move forward? And the answer was yes. Am I wrong, Tyler?
No, you're correct. And I think it benefits the, the commission to hear this, but Rick and I have had several conversations about this today.
Oh, okay, I wasn't aware, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, we, we had a couple this morning, I think, before you and I and Jen spoke, Dr. Carver, but Rick and I have touched base, I don't know, three more times since then. And, and Rick has had to hear it from me. But yes, what you said echoes what I've said to Rick numerous times today. As far as the, the bills that have been paid, my understanding is Coleronen is confirming that the amount of work that's being billed is, is appropriate. As far as the structural steel work goes, yes, a, a portion of it has been complete, probably 50% or more has been complete. The holdup for this weekend's pick, which would be the completion of the structural steel, is the steel posts that are in flight on the roof. They were supposed to be done over a month of goes, the problem. Honestly, I have no faith in anything that Save More tells us as far as schedule goes. We went through it in this week's meeting, line by line. And they tell us that the new schedule is on track, but I don't believe it, because we haven't, they haven't met any schedule to date. So I'm, I'm incredibly frustrated with Save More.
So if, if the way to motivate them is through not paying them, I'm all for it. Because I think that's the only option that we have.
Well, let me ask you this.
I agree 110%.
First place, if we don't make that date, right, we don't get reimbursement or, or, you know, there's a penalty, isn't there, or something?
There's, in terms of the reimbursement for the state, or are you talking about the reimbursement for the state or just?
That we have to be finished by a certain date, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we, we can work with it a little, we have some flexibility, a little bit to work with it, because it has to be expended by a certain point. So I'm, I'm not super worried about that unless it keeps going, right? I guess from a mechanical side, this is where I don't have any knowledge. To Dave's point, the weather's going to change. I don't know how that impacts things also, if it does or not. Dave's shaking his head, yes, so I'm saying, yes, it does. I'd be more concerned with that at this point. And I guess we can, we can hold back payment, can we not?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Then maybe that, maybe that will get their attention.
Who's going to read the riot act to Save More? I mean, I don't think, is it us or is it Tyler, or is it, you know, some say?
What was, what was the question? I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
Who's going to read the riot act to Save More to say, you know, you got to get up to speed here, otherwise you won't get paid or we won't approve any invoices? And.
Yeah, and I've had multiple conversations, I didn't, I didn't address the invoices, but I've had multiple conversations even today with Jason Harvey from, from Save More, who's our, our contact, and expressed how frustrating it's been and, you know, how dissatisfied we are with it. But, you know, he, he comes back and, and, you know, tells me, well, I couldn't predict the weather. And I said, we did address, and Tyler did address it on Tuesday at our OAC meeting, that, you know, what if it rains? And he said, oh, you know, if it rains, you know, we have ways of putting tenting up, you know, sweeping the, 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 with squeegees, the puddles with squeegees. But, and, you know, now he's saying, well, I didn't know how much it was going to rain. You know, it's supposed to have downpours and, you know, might, might impact, you know, mitigating getting into the school type of thing, which, which I get, we don't want to do that, right? But, but, you know, these posts, if these posts were done, it wouldn't be a problem at this point.
Yeah, I'm arguing with you, of course, but it's been a dry summer, we have a drought going on. And so with this weather, BS is BS. I mean, it's, you know, you got to do it when, when, or at night or, or during the weekend or, it's like a roofer. I mean, if, if it rains a day, well, you got to make it up on a Saturday or Sunday or something. That's a whole issue. And I'm not trying to lecture you, Rick, but it's very annoying here and somebody has to really read the riot act of this guy, Jason Harvey, and say, you know, do we have to sue you? You know, I mean, there's something that has to be done.
Can they do Saturday, Monday? Can they push the day ahead? Like, can they do the work Sunday versus Saturday?
Oh, I don't, I didn't ask that question, but I, can I just add one thing to what you're saying? I feel, I, I don't feel like, I know, like, I've emailed Jason several times and, and I can come on pretty strong at times. And he gives me this condescending little responses, that's the best, like, characterization I'm going to give it. I think until he cut off the money, he's, I, I don't think he's going to, I, I don't think he's going to react. I think he, you know, he just, he just lays out his excuses and we built two schools. And I feel like it's, it's frustrating. So I feel like we, I, I don't know, like I said, it sounds like we can just say, we're not paying you until we see some progress. I don't know if we, can we legally do that? Dave, you're saying yes to that. I think, I think, I think we've all had conversations with Jason, I guess is what I'm saying. And I think that until we say, we're not paying you, I don't think he, I don't think he's going to do, he's going to do whatever he wants.
Question after today's, sorry, tonight's meeting, that unless we see work going on, we're not going to approve any, any further in invoices or whatever, because the work is not being done according to schedules.
It's not even being done, it's, they're so far, I mean, they're, what, Tyler, I'm sorry, it's like a month.
Phrase it that we don't pay you till you start hitting some of these milestones. Because, Rick, is this the most accurate schedule we have, the one from the drive?
Correct, 9:30.
You put a beat into that and you just do some simple math.
So, so they're.
Not even a substantial completion until December. So if they, if, let's say it doesn't happen next week or there's some more bad weather, this thing's not happening and then we're into snow and.
Well, we, we have substantial completion and according to his schedule, substantial completion is the middle of November.
Yeah, but I'm saying now you got to push it out, because without the rooftop units, I'm assuming there's no ductwork going to rooftop units right now. The, the chain of stuff that needs to get connected and hooked up, you're pushing these states out by probably over a week. So now we're in December for substantial completion, just if we actually hit next week.
One of the things we'll be able to start discussing is what mitigation plans would be if this work isn't done and we don't have enough heat in those classrooms that are affected.
Let's say, I, I think we should phrase it, we're not going to open up the tap until you start hitting gates and getting this thing rained in. Not once we see you catch up, because what if they don't catch up till November? We have to say, we're not going to pay until you start hitting dates and getting this thing rained in and show us that you can actually complete and get us a substantial completion by, I mean, you got to give them now, looking at this, to the first week of December.
Right, but to Jen's point, to Jen's point, if they don't get this stuff done sooner than later, how are you, you going to heat these classrooms? How are these classrooms going to be usable?
Tyler can answer that question, because I've asked Tyler that question.
Yeah, so, so again, if we choose to believe what Jason's saying, the hydraulic piping for the radiators that backfilled all of the unit ventilators is in place. The valving is wired, but who are we using for controls? SNE needs to complete the programming. Jason has stated, I know that the piping is in, I don't know that I believe Jason when he says how far along the controls work is, but he said that they are going to finish the controls work in the next, I think he said, two weeks. Rick, was that correct?
Correct, yes, yes.
So that we would have the radiant heat. We obviously wouldn't have the heat from the VRFs, but if they keep their current timeline, we shouldn't be into the super cold temperatures. But again, I, I'm just not sure I believe anything that comes out of Jason's mouth at this point. I mean, it's original substantial completion, which again, to Rick's point, was delayed in part because of the state abatement approval. But original substantial completion was supposed to be next Tuesday.
Is there anyone at STV? Is there anyone at Coleronen? Is there anyone anywhere that can essentially audit at this point? If Tyler can't take Jason's word on what's being done, can we go through and look at what's being done or, or figure out if, if it's accurate?
Well, yes, we've had, we've had SES out there who's, you know, for the commissioning, and we've also had Coleronen out there two or three times, I forget, I forget which, and issued reports. So, you know, what they've done is, is moving along and I've had conversations with Craig and John from Coleronen. And, you know, they, they see the thing in the building being, being done, but obviously it's, it's the roof that's the issue at this point.
I think the issue, and Tyler can speak up on this, I think the issue is the upcoming work and the timeline of meeting that. I don't think we have questions about what has or has not been completed.
Yeah, the, the physical work that's been completed, we can audit and, and, you know, we have been auditing and it's done. What we've paid out is relatively in line, you know, Coleronen, I believe, is signing off on all of pencil recs before they, they land on this meeting for approval of payment. And I, I would agree that we are pretty in line with what we've paid to date. I don't see the pencil recs ahead of time, that's not how this process is laid out. I'm surprised to hear that they're already trying to build the crane pick. It's very presumptuous, I think. But I also have faith that Coleronen, if it had made it past Rick, that Coleronen never would have signed off on that. I just have no faith in any of the future work, because we're months in here of Jason telling us, oh, yeah, we're on track and we're going to meet that date. And then we get to that date and it's like, oh, yeah, we haven't started that work, I didn't know. So.
Who does Jason report to? I think that's what we got to freeze it.
The owner of the company? I mean, I think Jason is the, not the entirety, but he is our main problem. He is a vice president at the company, he's not a project manager, but he's the person that has been assigned to this project and he's not managing it.
When is he, you own the company, I mean, are they aware, I guess, of the issue and, you know, that they want to do work again for this, you know, on any other projects that we have? You know, if we have this much problems now?
I, I don't, personally, I don't know, I haven't spoken to anybody above Jason. I haven't spoken to anybody above Jason.
I can't even imagine ever even considering him for anything ever up to this.
It maybe, but Rick, is that something you can reach out to whoever his boss is?
Yes. Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed, I missed a little bit in their prose, but, but yes, I, I could find that out and, and reach out for sure.
Yeah, it seems like everybody in the commission as well, everybody on the call right now is concerned with that future timeline. So I mean, I, with my company, I don't want to know what's going on, especially if there are additional work could be at risk.
Okay, so, so it's, so Rick, then you will be calling the president, owner, whatever of Save More to say, we really have a problem here. The commission, the board of ed, the, all the people involved within this town here are very concerned about the finishing date and the progress of, of work. So.
Especially as you pointed out, I mean, these are classrooms that need to be warm in the winter, right? They need to be heated in the winter, so one would argue, you know, you know, it's for cooling, but they need to be worn for the students to actually, and the teachers to do their job, right? So it's, it's definitely a firm deadline that we.
So you're going to do that, Rick? I, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I will, I will reach out and do that this week.
Okay.
And you're also going to tell them we're not going to pay them?
Until the schedule.
Yeah, until that will come up. I think the board here is saying that we're not going to want any further payments until that we really see some progress on what they say with the schedule.
And again, so if it's raining tomorrow, they can't push everything a day, they can't do like a Saturday, Sunday with the crane or now Saturday is the only option, like.
I mean, at this point, they should eat the overtime or any extra.
Yeah, I mean, there's just.
Tyler, how many hours would it take for this whole, what are they saying? If you spoke, do we know how long the lift is going to take?
I mean, Jason is claiming that it's going to be a four to five hour pick, it's going to be an all-day pick. But Save More doesn't own the crane and in my experience, there's no way they're securing a crane for Sunday at this point. Usually you're, you're scheduling several weeks out, not a week out, not a couple of days out. I'm surprised to hear that they have somehow secured it for October 4th, to be honest.
Sometimes you can get cranes in at night when they're off, these companies will bring them in, because you're saying it's only four or five. I mean, if they, if Save More's got to pay the overtime to have their guys do it at night and bring in lights or do whatever, I mean, to get us back on track. Cranes can operate at night and they're usually not booked at night.
I mean, maybe have Save More give us all the options to how they can get this done by next, by October 4th. Overtime, Sundays, nights, you know, have them put it out there and, because what happens if it rains next weekend?
I mean, I don't, I don't think that the, I don't think that the rain, unless it's a, you know, gale force winds kind of thing and windy, because wind's going to naturally hurt your pick. But the, and the rain itself is more because the posts weren't put in. So the, the rain itself is inhibiting getting the posts and, and cutting through the roof, so we don't get damage into the school.
So the, the rain itself is, is inhibiting getting the post and, and cutting through the roof, so we don't get damage into the school. And that's where they, that's where they dropped the ball with the, the post not being in time.
All right, so. Oh, sorry.
No, it's okay. But just to Dave's point, it's, it's, this is the first time it's rained in like how many months?
Yeah.
So Rick, uh, we could go on here for, I mean, an hour. So if you could please contact the owner, the senior person at Save More within the next day or so. And if you could let us know by email to all the parties, concerned parties, uh myself, Tom, Dr. Carver, Tyler, you know, Je- Jennifer, everyone. And, and let us know what they're gonna say. Otherwise, someone else is gonna have to call. We may have to have Dan Corrigan. You know, somebody has to push this along. So if you can do that and then get back to us, you know, ASAP, whatever that is, uh that would be.
I'll take care of that and, and get back to you by the end of the week.
Great. I have one other question. Uh Dave may know this, but uh what temperatures are we unable to then uh balance or, or start up the air conditioning?
Oh, you, you have to have a heat load of, of pretty substantial heat load to do this. So if you're hitting November, December, you're not gonna be, you can balance the air, but you're not gonna be able to set up the air conditioning properly. The heat, absolutely you can. But then they'll have to come back in the spring to do a proper startup when you hit. You know, you want a good, heavy, hot day with a good load in there with meeting students and faculty to give it a constant heat load. So you're not, you know, bouncing back and forth.
So a- after October, we're not really, probably won't be able to do the AC.
I, no, there's, in my opinion, no. And I, I had a D two license for forty years. I did heating and air conditioning, so I can pretty much speak to that.
Okay, any other comments? Uh I think we kinda, I'm in exhaust, so we're really waiting. So thank you, Rick. If you do that and let us know by Friday, like you said, uh, on the progress and what, what are they gonna be doing? Do either double staff or, or whatever they're gonna do to meet that schedule. That would be most appreciated.
Yeah, I'll, you know, of course, a detailed schedule and, and make sure it's workable. And uh, you know, plan, planning for the fourth.
Again, as you pointed out, it, it can't happen, the school can't open at night. Pay the guys overtime like on a Tuesday night, Wednesday night. If you get a crane net, right? I mean, and anyway, just, it seems like there's other options besides just waiting another week.
So the weather for next week looked really, really good. So you know, I'm looking at the weather right now and you know, after Monday, it looks, you know, nice and cool and no rain for another couple of weeks. So and then again, don't forget too, I mean, we've had, like today was supposed to rain like crazy. It didn't. So God only knows what's gonna happen.
How many, how many posts are in or how many are still left to do? Does anybody know?
I'm not sure. I, I saw them up there working, but I didn't take count. I was dealing with other things when I crossed paths with them.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we exhausted that topic. Thank you very much, everybody. So uh for the school roofs project, while, while everybody is still here, um, and Rick, I guess you're gonna have to be on right now, whatever.
I will, I will be in touch.
Thanks, Rick.
Thanks.
Very much. Take care. All right. So I just wanted to, uh, a couple of questions came up the last meeting. So I have some things here. So uh, our first item here is the BHS roof focus only. And I had the, an email from Dr. Carter that basically said, so the roof proposals that we're gonna take a look at tonight uh is for the Berry School and for the high school roofs. Okay, so, so you sent something else that said basically the town said, we're gonna focus on the high school.
That's correct. That's correct.
All of these proposals that we have, they are a joint proposal for Berry and the, and the high school roof. So only gonna focus on the high school roof.
That's correct. So um I think what we were looking for, if, and Jen can correct me if I'm wrong, is are knowing that we're looking for a high school. And I thought the conversation last time was that we should do the entire high school, not just the um, the, the sec, the older section of it, that and um, in the way it was bid out, we could, we could accept the bid just focusing on the high school. And that's what the town would like us to focus on. So yes.
Right. And I think it makes sense with the bids that came in, they broke it down for Berry School, which we're not gonna, you know, look at. The BHS uh base or the, the old roof, the alternate, which is the gym roof, and then the total. And um I think Tyler has explained in the past that I believe that the uh gym roof, the warranty is gonna expire in twenty twenty eight or something. So by the time that they're up there, whether it's this spring or next spring, whatever. And while they're up there and they're uh doing all their testing, they might as well do both roofs. So I think that's uh, does anybody else have any comments on the commission here?
That's my understanding as well. Just the uh, the high school roof and the alternate as well as the main roof.
By the time we get to, through the approval and the planning and everything, it's time to do that anyway.
Right.
Look like doing it. Starts all over again.
Right.
Correct. And even if the town, for whatever reason decides they're not gonna do that one little sliver of the roof, at least you have the estimates of the cost and the design.
Correct. Right. No, it, I think we'll, in agreement, it makes complete sense while they're there, they should do both, both assessments. Correct. Okay.
It'd be cheaper.
And I, yes, it would. And I believe I, I, Dan definitely, Dan Carter definitely supports it. And I also spoke to Nick Ellis, the chair of the board of finance, and uh Tyler and I talked with them a little bit too. So I think they both concur.
Okay, so uh, so, so we have that uh done. So I guess the, the other issue is the uh five bids that came in a couple of months ago and they were re-revised, I think, once or twice. They meet all of the insurance criteria that the uh town attorney has. That was settled months ago, according to Jennifer and Tyler. So um has anybody on the commission here reviewed the uh bids that came in? Uh, you know, we have five of them. We have low to high. Uh, some of us have our opinions, but does anybody have any comments or? Or Dave, I don't know if, if you had a chance, I know you've been uh busy. Yes, I, so Tyler put that, he supplied that with us. He put that into the shared drive uh recently and uh his comments, Tyler said that he pretty much thoroughly re- reviewed the um submittals. And those were his comments. And um it looks like one of them is the lowest bidder, but uh, but also has the most experience per se. Uh, and um so does anybody else have any other comments?
I guess, Dr. Carver, have you, have you made a recommendation of the board of selectmen yet?
No, no, um it, I, I, I did, um, uh, I did.
You need to do that first.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, yes, Jen's right. We need to do that tonight. Um, I did put a placeholder on the agenda for the October Board of Selectmen meeting um to um depending upon if you concurred with our recommendation to go with the lowest hi- uh qualified bidder, which is Silver. You can see that, right? My screen? Yeah. So, and the, and if you look at just Beppo High School, um, don't, don't look at the green numbers, but um the amount would be about seventy three thousand two hundred dollars. So I think internally on our side, we agree that the lowest qualified bidder uh makes sense. And is, if you guys concur, you would need to vote on it. And then what, what we would do is we would go to the, I think it's October uh that Jen, can you look up the date of the Board of Selectmen meeting? Um, the first meeting in October, um, and I've actually already drafted on October seventh. I've drafted a memo, but I, I didn't wanna be presumptuous and share it with the committee.
Save in the dry. That's where I had a, I thought I read something where there was a recommendation, but maybe that's
Yeah, you know what? I probably put it in there.
Confused. I'm like, did they already recommend that's?
No, 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 no. I, I, I was just trying to be proactive, uh because I know once you guys make the recommendation, that we have to submit it to the Board of Selectmen. So I just wanted to get a memo drafted. Um, but it, it would obviously change if you guys have a different feeling about um uh about who should be awarded this. Um, I, I think the, the the challenge, and I think you guys know this, but I'll just say it out loud, is that if, if it's, if you don't go with the lowest qualified, you have to have, um, you have to have reasoning for that.
Right, right. Um, and I believe if whoever got to vote on tonight, I believe, and Nancy could help us more, but she's not here. I believe then our commission would have to then s- submit that in writing to the Board of Selectmen as well of who we think and why.
Yes, and I, I took the liberty of drafting something for you guys, which is I think what one of the commissioners members was saying. Um, so uh, yes. It's in the drive.
Okay.
But, but you, you first have to uh vote on uh who you would like to select. That's correct.
Right.
You're actually recommending to the procurement committee to be recommended to the, the Board of Selectmen.
Alright, so I guess it's, what do you think?
Well, yeah, so before we make a motion, is there any um discussion as far as any recommendations besides what we have talked about?
I agree with the, the lowest bid. I mean, even just looking at it, I think they're probably qualified too, the amount of work they've done.
Yeah, I would agree.
Yeah, I have no objection.
I would agree with the recommendation.
Right. Uh Dave, do you have any comments?
No, I know Tyler does his due diligence, so I would go with his recommendation.
Okay. All right, so um then let me make a motion. Hang on, I just wanna make sure I get everything correct here. Here it is. Okay. You have it? Yeah, I have it here. Okay. Oh, okay. So uh I'll make a motion that we approve the lump sum pricing proposal from Silver, Petricelli and Associates. Uh bid number two, uh, uh twenty twenty five dash zero zero five for the architectural design and construction administration services for the school roof of the Beppo High School only. In, in the amount of, so both, both roofs, the uh older roof, the main building roof and the gym addition roof are total of seventy three thousand and two hundred dollars. And we will recommend it to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, sorry. Of the procurement? Part of the Board of Selectmen.
It would actually be to both, but yes.
Uh, for the October seventh meeting. Second by Tom.
Correct. Second again.
Okay. All in favor?
Alright.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay, it's passed. All right. So Dr. Carver, I would appreciate it if you could maybe send that draft memo to myself and Tom. And uh, and, and copy Nancy also, if you would. And we'll sing in the next week or so. And um, and we'll send it back to you for any other comments. And then we'll try to, yeah, uh, well, we will attend the uh, the October seventh meeting.
Yep, and, and I, you, you are correct. I did put the draft of the memo right in the um, the drive. So you can see it, you can see it now, but I will, I will absolutely send it to you uh separately. Okay?
Yeah, yeah, I, sorry, I, I meant that, yes, okay.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Bye, guys.
Okay, good night. Take care.
Good night. Take care.
You gonna know exactly where this is?
Where exactly? Um, I was just in it, hang on. I just closed it.
Yeah, I was thinking.
So that's in the um, Beppo Schools Roof Project?
Yes, you go.
Uh. Copy a bid, high school, okay, recommendation roof, or no?
Share drives.
RFP design phase would be there?
Public site and building folder. And then Beppo Schools Roof, Roof Projects.
Right.
And then it says, it's the second file on mine. It says, recommendation roof design and cost. No, it's a word.
I know, I saw that.
Is that under bid, bid submission?
Send it, it's uh, send her Beppo Schools Roof Project. It's in there. It's got a blue icon next to it. It was uploaded on the twenty second.
All the recommendations.
Oh.
Oh, I sort mine the other way. That's why I didn't say.
Okay, I think I have that.
Essentially, that's the.
I think I printed it. Okay.
Sorry, you with the animal shelter?
Well, okay, so uh, the next item then is the animal shelter that we have. And um there's basically not anything really new, but uh John Matts from the building department did put a lot of information into the shared drive folder for that. Um, they put in these uh sites, remember from around the town that may be available uh for building and, and so he up-updated that with that.
So what he did was he put the surveys in from when they did the Beppo PD.
Right.
Uh, survey uh for land. So that's all in there.
Yeah, all the documents in there. It has the different options. We showed us like the different comparisons of the Danbury dolls, all the other, it seems like it's pretty full.
And like a draft uh
Yeah.
design kind of uh as a.
I mean, I don't know if you guys did it just to look at the properties, but there's
No.
There's only a couple that seem realistic.
Although list is extensive, but you know, I don't know how many are on here. Um, I mean, some of them you wouldn't be able to look, cause it's
Right, right.
The different, uh, you know, parking records of, you know, different fields or, you know, the water treatment, but you know, there's different identified, that's what they call them. Whatever, things like that. Yeah, I, I don't know if he's gonna go any further into recommending a few of them.
See, I thought he was gonna recommend his potential ones, but obviously he's probably working on other things. I don't know if that'd be him or Eric that recommend kind of, I thought he was gonna say their top five or their top three or something, right?
Yeah.
In addition to the property that's already up today. But in looking at the list, I'm sure it's, he probably has a couple in mind.
They've been very busy for the highway garage and all that. So I think he was nice enough, you know, he, he put all the information in the animal shelter project folder. So uh, we'll uh, we'll entertain this, I mean, the next meeting or so.
Yep, yeah, yeah, it makes sense.
On that. Okay, so the next one is the high rate, highway garage roof replacement. And Tom and I were on that at the, at the special board of selected meeting yesterday that Eric Swonson and, and um uh John Matts uh proposed on that uh the uh just a second, I have that here. So the two, now, o- once again, uh, John Matts put a, a lot of information up, updated proposals for both uh Tarra, Tarra, Tarra Randtino and, and Torelli.
Both Gary's, right?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Tarantino, Torello.
Yeah, say that five times. They proposed it, this discussed some of the insurance issues. Uh, the town attorney was there, so they approved some lower limits, I believe, for the professional insurance. Everything else is there. So the Board of Selectmen did approve for a total of both of those with, I mean, a contingent of twenty five thousand dollars. However, they will require an addendum to both of the proposals from both of these firms. Just to make sure that they say, yes, all the insurance is done and that they will um attest to the limits.
Right. And it goes more to the next phase. So, right, um, we wouldn't wanna get involved with these these folks if they can't meet the insurance requirements for the design phase.
Right.
But we're gonna, we're gonna waive them for the assessment.
Right.
Um, and Eric had, you know, had just sent out an email thi- this evening about
Right.
an hour ago, um, starting that process. So it's been recommended to the Board of Selectmen. I think they're recommending to the Board of Finance for the twenty five thousand.
Right.
Um, I didn't, I don't know what CNR means. They were talking about that. Okay, um. But again, I, even if they vote on that, if Tarantino and Torello come back and say. But again, I, even if they vote on that, if Tarantino and Torello come back and say, here are our limits for the design phase. Then, and they don't meet the requirements, the insurance requirements, then, then I think we're starting from scratch anyway, so hopefully they can meet those requirements.
Yeah, but that's phase two, this phase one is for the assessment only.
Right, but we wouldn't wanna go with.
Right, with them if they can't meet the.
Correct, so that whatever firm would have this assessment, they put together and maybe up the, okay, here's what this, here's what Gary said. The assessment, and they could go for that. They, you'd have to do the whole assessment all over again.
I think we would start fresh.
Yeah.
Cause uh, cause that happened, I think, Torello and Tarantino wouldn't use the last guy's assessments.
So I, I think that would be an issue, right, cause essentially you could be throwing money away.
Yeah, so.
I guess if the selectmen were okay with that, then.
I think they're approving the twenty five thousand, or they're gonna recommend.
Contingent on the addendum.
Right.
To the proposal to say that, yes, for the next phases, we will meet all the town insurance requirements. So we can't really do anything more tonight with that, because we're waiting for that.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing for us to do anyway, this, it's been recommended to the Board of Finance.
And they passed it contingent on the addendums. So.
Okay.
Eric will, he sent some information tonight and and that he's working on it, so. They may not get back again.
But then hopefully this, it seems like it moves it along, which is good, but again, that's the challenges Eric explains. You know, since what, but he said every time it gets moved along, nothing happens, so.
Right, so this is a good push.
And the selectmen, and even the Board of Finance, I'm sure is aware of the, of the issues with the Congress and stuff.
Right, so hopefully they can meet the requirements, otherwise we've kinda gone through a process, only to start again.
But again, if they can't, we're not gonna give them money, cause that's contingent upon them meeting that for the next.
So we have to wait for that and um. So we'll know, we'll know more about that, but but anyway. A positive step is that the assessment, it looks like will be. So that's very good. The third proposal for the sprinklers were, was tabled for the time being. The, for the sprinkling system of the, of the high.
So the, the assessment wouldn't include sprinklers?
No, 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 that's a whole.
That's gonna be part of the design phase.
Right.
And I would agree, I think the design would be in, with or without sprinklers. Cause I think there's substantial increase in cost and.
Right.
Again, the, the selectman has to sell it to the Board of Finance too, right?
So the first step, the assessment, seems like it's ninety percent.
Yeah.
Or then uh, one of those selectmen has if, at the end of the assessment, if. Tarantino, Torello can make cost recommendations for the property. So hopefully that's something that they can agree to after the assessment.
Well, see, that's good. Sure, just to have an idea of what that's gonna look like.
Right.
Okay, so uh. The Muni Center Locker, really, there was no information. Uh, uh, there is some information in the shared drive, but. Really, there is no drive to that at the present time, so we'll shelve that.
I guess mainly thought there would be at some point to remove it from the agenda, but maybe there's a conversation with Nancy.
Yeah, it's been on.
Yeah, you just put it on there, it'd be this table.
Okay, and the last um. Topic is um. The charter revisions, Dan Carter has asked, while they're looking at the whole town charter. Is, is there anything from any of the uh boards or anything? And um. So, I sent that out last week, the chapter twenty Public Site and Building Commission. Regs, regs on it, and um, I don't know if anybody has any comments, the only comment. That Nancy Ryan had, and I think that Tom and I have uh talked about. Is um, section twenty dash two. Uh, paragraph four. The commission, excluding any temporary members, shall appoint its own chairman and secretary. And establish its own rules and regulations for the conduct of its meetings, and shall maintain a record of each meeting. So uh, Kathy is our secretary. I believe she said uh, past years, uh, or many years ago, I guess there was somebody on the commission.
Yeah, yes.
That used to take those notes. But because everything has to be officially recorded, filed and everything. The town um appoints and and has a, a town employee do that at this present time. So the only other thing is, if anybody, if we wanna change that, shall appoint uh its own chairman. Now, we've agreed to uh, I will be the chairman. And Tom said that uh, he will be the vice chairman.
Since your point, it's not in there, right?
It's not in there.
It should be.
Yeah.
Approved, yeah.
I don't know if we should say co-chairman, only because when you say co, I think that means both people have to. So I think if we uh want to revise this. Uh, to say that we'll appoint its own chairman and vice uh chairman also.
Yeah.
Sort of like deputy.
Deputy. Have to drop into twenty.
I guess whatever the standard language is for the other uh commissions, right, that pride chair and vice chair.
I, I, yeah, I don't know what the other, but what I can do is then I can send something to.
You did point out your point where it says temporary members, is that like when Dave was put on that commission? Or is that like Nancy's technically temporary until.
Temporary is like, you get brought on, like I brought, brought on originally just for the HVAC as soon as.
Right, cause now Nancy's typical, cause she's waiting to be filmed, right?
But she's still on. Dave also, as far as I understand.
She serve until you're replaced.
Until you're replaced.
She resigned.
So Dave, did you have the ability to vote on elections while you were on the.
I voted when I was here, yeah, I mean, I was, I made it to what? Like a handful of meetings and then they asked me to join.
So that's separate still voting, again.
You can't hold that chairman or vice chair in there, which.
Okay, well, there is a section B on that. Temporary, and it talks about that you can be um appointed for like a special project. Um, uh, and may appoint up to two, two temporary members. Um, and has to be one of each party and all that kinda stuff. And it does say such, such temporary members shall. Uh, uh, be able to vote in meetings of the commission only on matters relating to the specific assignment. So he was able to vote on the HVAC.
Okay.
While he was on until prior to being appointed.
Makes sense, I mean, that's, but I, I would agree with you, you and Tom, as far as the chair, vice chair, whatever, that secretary doesn't make sense. This way it's an official position in the char.
But I'm gonna, we should probably keep secretary in there. Uh, as one is, we have one already.
But we're not gonna appoint one.
I mean, yeah.
I would, cause Kathy, you're gonna, the town's not gonna remove.
No, they, they do all recording secretaries, but I explained to brother at the beginning was, I mean, there is time, like I will. We have a very small pool of recording secretaries, so there's gonna be times where I won't be here. And somebody has to take minutes, if I can't get a replacement, then.
Nancy in the past has taken minutes if somebody could not cover, so I think.
Yeah, you're right. Is that the correct secretary is the classification that they were through?
I don't know, like, I don't know if that's when they were originally, when they put it in, if it was the person that took the notes we were getting, I'm assuming. I don't know how they consider it now.
So maybe bring it up to, would that be Dan or legal or something, like just classify what a secretary mean?
Well, I would almost change, I would add, you know, maybe a si- a third position, if we wanted our own commission secretary, and then you're the recording secretary. The town recording secretary, I don't know if that makes any sense.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Cause if, if she wasn't able to make it and there was no replacement, then who takes the minutes?
Well, like I say.
Well, you have to.
We just do a, a rock paper scissors?
Okay, well, let me.
No, but you're. Yeah, that's fine, maybe just clarification on the secretary.
But I think when we talk about it, because it might be that language probably in all of it, it'll probably decide whether or not they wanna have secretary. Apart in it.
Cause it's not necessarily just this.
Yeah. It's just really. Enough to be a town employee to take minutes, honestly, we could hire outside.
Yes.
Have someone just come in to take minutes, so it could be anyone.
It's a, it's a certification program or?
No. Nothing, that's what I'm saying, you can literally have, like, if we wanted to, if we were really, you know, we would probably put an ad in. And if there's somebody who just wanted some part-time work, that wanted to be involved with Tom, they can just come in and, and do the minutes. They would meet with one of us to kinda get the rundown on how to do it, but they can just.
Yeah, for, for set fee, but they'd have to be, they would get access to all the.
Yeah.
Team and blah, blah, blah.
Right.
Teams or anything.
Dave, are you all right with that? I, I don't know.
Yeah, I'm good.
Comments, but. Dave, I'm all right, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that works for me.
Okay, alright, so.
I don't wanna feel left out on that.
Alright, so, yeah, sorry, okay. Okay, so I'll do that. Alright, if there's nothing else, uh, I make a motion that we adjourn at um. Eight oh one PM.
Sounds like a plan.
Second, all in favor? Thank you, thank you, Dave.
Everybody.
Nice to see you, thank you.
Bye bye.